Okay, good evening, everyone. It is now six thirty and I'll call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. The first item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Does staff have any changes?
No changes.
None from staff.
Commissioners? Is there a motion?
I motion to approve.
There's.
Second?
Robertson, a one. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion carries. The second item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the December ninth, two thousand and nineteen Planning Commission meeting. Staff, any changes?
No changes from staff.
Commissioners?
No.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
My second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. The third item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for Northland Real Estate Group for rezoning from our one, one family residential to mixed P U D, mixed use planned unit development, preliminary and final plat of a two lot commercial subdivision known as the Retreat on Crystal Lake, concept and development stage P U D, variance for setbacks and building height, conditional use permit for impervious surface coverage, and grading in steep slopes for an apartment building to be located at one five three oh nine Maple Island Road, presented by Ms. Geros.
Thank you. The application we have this evening is got a number of different items associated with it. This is not the first time that this project or renditions of it has been before. Planning Commissioner City Council has a kind of a long history, going back several years of various concept plans and different things. The most recent would be last year, there was a comprehensive plan amendment for the site, changing the land use designation from low density residential or single family or one to mixed use in the comprehensive plan. So the first item is to consider a zoning application to rezone the entire site from our one single family to mixed use planned unit development, and that would be to bring the site into consistency with the comprehensive plan. The second application is to consider preliminary and final plat of the Retreat on Crystal Lake, and the proposal is to consolidate the four separate tax parcels into basically a larger parcel and then have two lots, one for Grace United Methodist Church and then another for the application you'll be reviewing this evening. The third application is concept and development stage planned unit development, and that is to allow for the church and active senior apartment project. Specifically, the senior apartment project is for a one hundred unit senior active living apartment complex, and there are a number of deviations that go along with that that we'll discuss further, and that's why there is the planned unit development aspect of this. There is a variance from the subdivision ordinance, which is a little bit different than variances for the zoning ordinance that we typically deal with, and that's based on state statute changes. So there are a couple of variances relating to lot area and lot width for the subdivision ordinance. There are variances requested for the shoreland ordinance, and again, the shoreland ordinance is something that was adopted by the city. It's required for all cities, counties, townships to adopt shoreland management regulations, and that is administered by the Department of Natural Resources. The city adopted its regulations back in, I believe, the nineteen nineties, and the provisions have remained pretty much the same ever since. So there, in the shoreland ordinance, the way Burnsville's ordinance was adopted, there are no planned unit development considerations or performance standards. So when we're dealing with the shoreland district, any deviations from that need to be processed through a variance or conditional use permit. The next item, again, shoreland related, is a conditional use permit, and this is related to impervious surface coverage. It's something that is allowed by the ordinance, but again, we need to specifically call it out because that's how things work with the shoreland ordinance. In terms of the subject site, we're looking at the Grace United Methodist Church site throughout this presentation, or referred of it to G U M C, just quickly. The subject site is a six point one acre property. It was developed back in the early sixties, before the city of Burnsville even was incorporated, and it's completely surrounded by Crystal Lake West Park, except for on the west side, we have Maple Island Road and then the I thirty-five corridor, and then across from the site is the Buck Hill Ski Club. And on the right, this gives you an idea, it shows the individual parcels. There are actually, this is off a little bit, this actually goes up to this point. So there are four separate parcels that comprise the entire six point one acre site. And on the, as part of the application, they did do an ALTA survey, so that gives you all of the existing conditions. And as I had indicated, the subject site was platted back in nineteen sixteen as part of the Crystal Oaks development, and way back then, the area was platted considering small cabins. Those, for whatever reason, did not materialize over time. Later, in nineteen sixty-two, the church, the initial church was built, it was a smaller church than we have out there today. Nineteen sixty-four, the city incorporated as a municipality. In nineteen seventy-nine, the first conditional use permit was issued for the church, and that was to allow signage that exceeded the ordinance at that time for a Montessori school. After that, in nineteen eighty-six, several of the roads within the plat were vacated. It was petitioned by the church to consider vacating some of these roads, and actually, the city vacated more than what the church petitioned because they just determined with the steep slopes and with the development pattern out there, and also, the city was in the process of acquiring the adjacent properties for Crystal Lake West Park, that they did not anticipate a future need for those rights of way, so they were vacated. Then in nineteen eighty-seven and two thousand and four, there were C U P amendments for additions to the church. The one in two thousand and four was in result of, there was a big fire, a lot of fire damage. So in order to reconstruct that and expand it somewhat, that conditional use permit was approved. And then in twenty-five, or excuse me, twenty fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen different sketch plans were provided by Grace Church for the property, looking at the potential to how they could develop the site further. And then in twenty nineteen, there was a concept plan that was provided by the current applicant, which is Northland Real Estate Group, L L C. And then we did the comprehensive plan amendment based on the city council review of the concept plan. They thought that it had merit, and they wanted to see it continue, so the comprehensive plan was amended to allow for this type of use. And then, at this point in time, we have the actual application. In terms of the subject site itself, there, again, this is part of the ALTA survey, there are a couple of encroachments that I need to call to attention to Planning Commission. One would be the left or the west side of the property, the church parking lot, the west part of it actually encroaches into the city park. This actually dates back many, many years. The church built this initially in nineteen sixty-two, and the right of way was platted and available for them. Over the years, as the right of way was vacated and the way that vacations work, certain properties go to different lots. So ultimately, what happened is this part of the driveway is no longer within the, the, it's no longer within the actual easement because that's been vacated, but it is within the park land, if you will. The other area where there's an encroachment is that there's a small fire pit area and benches in this location, which would need to be removed and brought in to the site, so there's not an encroachment in the park. And for this, this is just the, a near map, which gives us our most current aerial information. And again, we've talked about some of the signage and the comprehensive plan amendment. What I'd like to call attention to is that we have, the south part of this parking lot is ultimately proposed to be removed and redone, and then the building that's proposed for the apartment building is going to be proposed in this area. And you can see that the site is heavily wooded, really, on all sides, and the purpose or the intent of having the Crystal Lake West Park is as an open space, a large open space park. Grants were used to obtain certain parts of that park land, and so it is really not something that's going to be actively developed, but more open space, and there are trails and a couple of small parking areas. That's really it for development in the park. The preliminary plat identifies the subject site being split into two lots. We've got the northerly lot, which will be retained by the church. And they are showing, they do have frontage that is proposed along Maple Island Road, and then the apartment building to the south, and the entire property will be accessed through the one driveway access in this location here. And then they will be doing P U D to have joint use of the parking lot, zero lot line setbacks for the joint parking lot, those types of things. One of the items that was uncovered as part of the review of the project is, the project is complicated because there are many different sections of ordinance and also different ordinances that apply. And in looking at the subdivision ordinance, which is separate from the zoning ordinance, there are requirements for what needs to be platted for drainage and utility easements. And along the front property lines, there's supposed to be a minimum ten foot drainage and utility easement, and then also five feet on all of the side property lines. Unfortunately, with this P U D, what occurs is they are, they have retaining walls that are shown in this area, and the city engineer has determined that they really do not want to do an encroachment agreement for those. There is drainage that is available within the public right of way, and then they do not need to have the easements through the middle of the joint parking lot. In order to address that, one of the items is that in the recommendations from the city engineer is that a separate variance application be provided to the subdivision ordinance, basically allowing these lots not to have those particular drainage and utility easements. The site plan is identified above. It's very busy, but basically, it shows again the existing church and the apartment building in this location here, to the south. And there will be joint use of this parking area. There's an additional parking area, seventeen spaces, that is proposed directly west of the existing church. And then the turning radius has been identified and provided for as needed by our fire department for emergency vehicles. The, as people come in to the site, there are, they will come in, and there are two garage entrances. There are two different levels for garages, and one of the entrances is on the north side here, and the entrance to the other level is on the west in this location. In terms of improvements, they are showing a plaza area, general plaza area in the front or on the north side as you enter the apartment building, and then there will also be a patio area to the rear of the building. So those are the basic improvements that are shown. In terms of development summary chart, again, this is much more extensive than we typically see because of the shoreland standards versus the mixed use standards versus et cetera. So what we can say in general for this project is that the, there are several P U D benefits and also some deviations that we'll go through, but in general, they're providing more green space overall and within the parking lot and building perimeter green space than is required. They're providing more underground parking than the general ordinance standards require. They are proposing less impervious surface than they could have out there, and they are proposing less tree removal than they can do based on the standard ordinance. For the planned unit development, the project is, is identified above. This would be looking at the north side of the new apartment building facing the church and then the joint parking lot. As far as P U D benefits, there are a number of them. Number one, the existing church has got a septic system, and it's not really a positive thing to have a septic system, especially in a shoreline district. So what will occur on this is the church is already hooked up to city water. They will be hooked up to sanitary sewer, and septic system will be removed as part of this project. That is seen as a benefit to the site. In addition to that, stormwater facilities will be introduced on the property. There currently are none, and I'll show you in the site plan next where those stormwater facilities will be. Also, the apartment parcel, because it will be sold and then owned by a private entity, the apartment parcel will become a tax paying parcel. Currently, the entire six point one acres is owned by the church, and they are tax exempt. The existing overhead electric power lines that are located on the west part of the site will all be removed and put underground, which is a definite improvement. The project, as I said, exceeds ordinance standards for green space. They're removing fewer trees. There is legal nonconforming shed on the property that's proposed to be removed. It's currently in the southeast corner of the existing parking lot, so that will bring that situation into compliance. More underground parking is provided than required. And also, this project will result in a multi-use trail connection for a gap that currently exists. So that is a benefit that occurs actually outside of the site. The trail connection will be provided along Maple Island Road. In terms of the deviations, there are a bunch of deviations. I'd like to call your attention to the ones with kind of the yellow or orange circle. These are elements of the ordinance where these things are allowed, provided you go through a conditional use permit or P U D. So it's not really a deviation, but we've always called them out as such. So these are allowed per the ordinance. The project will result in, once they plat the two lots, the existing church signage and cross for the freestanding sign will actually be located on lot two, which is the south piece to be sold. So there will be a deviation for that off-premise sign that's needed. Nothing physically will change out, you know, when you're actually looking at the property, but the lot lines may change. So we will need to have some easements for access and maintenance so they can continue to get to that signage. Also, there's a deviation which allows for the existing driveway encroachment into the park. That's an existing condition. This will memorialize it, and that's one of the benefits of doing a planned unit development. The, there's a deviation, as I said, the overall green space exceeds the ordinance standards. However, when you look at the individual lots, the existing church has forty-three percent building perimeter landscaping as opposed to the fifty percent standard. The P U D allows you to flex and have overall, which does exceed the perimeter landscaping because this is an existing condition, we're identifying it as deviation, and again, memorializing that as part of the P U D. Items number H and I are different standards related to lot area. One is related to the mixed zoning district, and the other one is a deviation that's actually a lot area standard found in the parking schedule. So they're two different things, and deviations are needed for both of those primarily because the second lot is somewhat smaller than what the standards call for in these cases. However, again, getting back to that multiple, multiple provisions or sections of the ordinance, the actual lot size based on just the mixed district would, does meet that standard. So these are these conflicting areas of the current ordinance. Then, item J is a deviation to request a lot setback standard, and I'll get into that when we talk about the site plan a little further. K is the driveway to the underground garage. There is a standard in the ordinance that indicates that seven percent should be the maximum slope when you have accesses to townhomes or multifamily projects. And they are proposing with theirs, one of the drives into the apartment building has an eight percent slope, and the other has a nine percent slope. There's another deviation for setback for the level one garage to be one foot as opposed to ten feet from the west property line. There's a deviation for residential density. This again is one of these things where the overall density falls within what's required or what's allowed in the mixed district. But when you look at just lot two alone, it's, it's over the density for that. So the P U D again allows you to take that density and spread it over the entire project site. There is also a deviation, there is a different standard when you have an apartment building or multifamily adjacent to a collector's street. This is a higher level street, that the front setback changes from thirty feet to fifty feet. So they are requesting a deviation from that standard. And then also, another deviation for the parking lot, and this is a setback again, related to the front property line. And the last one is for retaining walls, eight feet and taller in the side yard. Those are, can be done with a C U P or P U D, and they do have a tall retaining wall in the side yard, so that will apply. In terms of the apartment building itself, it is a four, four-story apartment complex, and the materials are shown and provided in the packet. On the west side, this would be the side that's going to face thirty-five W. This is the lower or lowest level garage. And then on the north side, this would be the, the second story garage access, so that's what those happen. But this would be what you would see primarily when driving by on thirty-five W. And then from the lake, you would be looking at this lower, lower graphic in this location. As far as exterior materials, they do all meet the ordinance. They're looking at a series of different colors and types of siding materials. These are cement board type. It's not just straight wood, so it will meet the durability aspects of the ordinance. And they've got multiple colors, kind of a deep blue, grays, light gray, and darker color. The roofing is supposed to be asphalt shingles, again, a darker color. They have accents, wood tone accents and lap siding on parts of the building, and then the, also the decks will have this wood appearance as well, and there are trusses for accents on the gables. And in addition to that, they do have concrete, stone, masonry veneer over substantial parts of the building as well. For the underground parking, they have two levels, and they, parking actually exceeds the minimum requirement for the uses. So there's not, in this case, although they're doing joint parking, they technically can, they're providing enough for each space, so it's not like they need a deviation for lesser parking. And then the unit types that are proposed are one bedroom, one bedroom plus den, two bedroom and two bedrooms plus den. Units range from six hundred ninety-nine square feet to fourteen thirty-one square feet, and they are mixed throughout all four floors. So you don't have certain areas just with small units, et cetera. It's mixed throughout the entire building. Also wanted to indicate that they do have, this is the community patio that I referred to earlier. They've got a fitness room, and then also area for gaming for people to get together, community room. community rooms, that type of thing, all on the first floor. Getting to the site development itself, this shows the existing property and this is the removals plan. As I indicated, they are basically going to be removing the southern part of the existing parking lot pavement. It's in need of being fixed. And then they also are going to upgrade the existing driveway. The driveway will be upgraded to provide concrete curb and gutter on both sides, which will help to direct stormwater instead of off of each side. It will direct it to Maple Island Road. It'll also improve the appearance of the site and help the parking, or excuse me, the driveway to last longer because you won't have that breakup of the sides of the driveway. The area that's shown here is the area primarily of the tree removals. So they are proposing to remove thirty-one percent of the trees. The ordinance allows them to remove up to sixty percent of the trees. So they're removing much less than what the ordinance would allow them to do. One of the items that we had gone over previously was related to the steep slopes in the shoreline district. In the shoreline district, there is a shoreline bluff standard. And what this shows is the green line at the bottom here of the yellow area. This is the top of the bluff. And then there is a minimum twenty-foot distance from that top of bluff that's called the bluff impact zone. And this is set up, really no structures are allowed to be within this except for stairs and landings. So otherwise, the ordinance is set up not to allow any structures within that. The purple line at the top is a thirty-foot setback. And this is a thirty-foot setback from the green top of bluff line. And what the applicant is proposing is they are showing parts of the building that are shown in this red color. These are proposed setback to allow them to be setback twenty feet as opposed to thirty feet from the top of bluff. So these are variances that are being requested for these four parts of the site. In terms of the utility plan, we do have our engineering consultant, Sarah, that's here that can address this further. But they're basically showing four different underground treatment systems. And that would be, there is one located here. There is a large one also located here. And I believe, let me see where they, or maybe there's three, I'm sorry. This one, and then there's one right here. So there are three underground stormwater treatment facilities that are proposed for the project. In terms of the other utilities I had discussed, and they're shown on this particular plan, taking the overhead power lines and undergrounding them. And then the site is already served with water that will need to be continued to the apartment. And then there are a couple of conditions that we've identified from the fire department that they just want to make sure that there is adequate sized water lines and that fire hydrants are put based on the separation standards. This would be the landscape plan that's proposed. They are proposing to do landscape on both lots. This lot line here that divides the two is in this location. And they are proposing to add landscaping along the front of all of the parking areas, which is a standard. Also, you have, these are uphill, so you're, as you're driving along Maple Island Road, you're not going to see those parking areas, but they've done a nice job of providing landscape screening in addition to this area. And primarily along the back of the building, they are proposing a total of fifty-three evergreen trees for their landscape plan, a hundred ornamental trees, those are smaller crab trees, shrubs, et cetera, seventy-two shrubs and then perennials and grasses like day lilies and those types of things. So it should be a year-round interest in terms of the landscape plan. And it does meet the ordinance and exceed the ordinance standards. Tree preservation, we talked about that. The areas where trees are proposed to be removed, they're shown with X's. It's kind of hard to see on this scale, but basically in the area where the apartment building is proposed. And also the improvements for the parking lot. In terms of lighting, the lighting does meet the ordinance. They are, the closest lighting that's proposed for exterior lighting is within the parking lot in a landscape parking island. And the periphery perimeter lighting does not exceed one-foot candle, so it meets the ordinance. There are no wall pack units that are proposed on the side facing Crystal Lake. And then this would be the stormwater protection plan. If there are questions related to that, they can be further discussed. In terms of the variances that we outlined, there are a couple of differences. The planning commission is most used to seeing zoning ordinance variances. And there the standard is to find practical difficulty. When we deal with the subdivision ordinance, it's a little bit different. It's called practical hardship, basically the same thing, but they're just worded a little bit differently in the statutes. So I just wanted to call your attention to that. The city council has a variance guideline policy. And the purpose of that is to have consistent review of certain factors when taking a look at variances so that we can be consistent in terms of the factors that we review. When applied in this case, there are sixteen positive factors, three negative factors out of a total of nineteen. The non-conforming septic system will be removed, so that is positive. Stormwater management will be added. Their erosion should be reduced from the existing site condition. Again, more trees are going to be preserved. Also in this area and within Crystal Lake West Park, oak wilt is present. And the city and the church have worked together for years to address oak wilt. So there are some conditions that are listed or part of the recommendation that address oak wilt and the applicant then needing to work with our city forester in order to make sure that that doesn't progress or affect any other trees in the area. And we have less impervious surface than what the ordinance allows. And the irregular property shape is really also one of the main reasons for the variances that are requested. The recommendation from staff is to approve the project as presented. There are a number of conditions. The majority of, or a lot of the conditions really relate to the infrastructure improvements for city sewer. This project, when it was initially considered, and even back when the comprehensive plan amendment was looked at, the proposal was to bring sewer through Crystal Lake West Park, basically from the lake underneath the park directional bore or digging to the site. And that was something that was highly controversial with residents and also several of the council members. What this application is proposing is to route the sewer along Maple Island Road. And that would involve also the city obtaining a grant for public infrastructure improvements, which would allow that. And then in addition, for those infrastructure improvements would also include that trail connection to make those two, those two items, which I think make this project much more positive in terms of how it would be viewed from the public and then also from the city. So the specific items that we've included, I've talked about most of them. We have the variance application that will be needed from the subdivision ordinance to get rid of those easements. Access easement will be needed for the driveway in the park. The fire pit and benches that are encroaching will need to be removed. There will need to be, or the crosswalks are proposed within the development, but they're just shown as painted and the ordinance does require that they need to be of a different material. They can't just be painted on. So we've added a condition, which is the minimum ordinance standard. They're also proposing vinyl coated chain link fence along the retaining walls, especially where they're quite high and they're very close to where people could be parking and walking, et cetera. However, they did not show anything on the common, on the patio area. And that retaining wall is quite tall as well. So we have included a condition that somehow safety provisions be incorporated, be it if they want to do a fencing or if they want to do retaining walls or whatever, just to provide protection from falling off. The maximum slopes are limited to three to one. There is a note on the plans that indicates something about four to one slopes. But for the shoreline district and just in general, meaning the city's ordinance, our maximum slopes are three to one. And then item number seven is actually a duplicate. So condition number seven can be removed. That's the same as item number one. Number eight is the septic system be removed and then public sanitary be connected for the church. Number nine, because this is residential development being proposed adjacent to the freeway, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has noise standards. The applicant has indicated that they are willing to do the noise mitigation to address those. We've just included a condition that that is something that will need to be addressed at the time of building permit. Tree removal permit will need to be obtained before any work at the site. They need to provide a woodland preservation security letter of credit or cash in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars. They need to provide a tree protection plan and fencing to be approved by the city forester. And this gets to the oak wilt situation. Number fourteen, that all mechanical equipment, et cetera. And these are ground mechanical equipment because nothing is proposed to be put on the roof of the building. But they do need to be screened. In terms of sign permits, there is one sign that's proposed on the apartment building. It's on the north side above the main entrance, which is about sixty-four square feet. Or it might be even smaller than that. It's well within the ordinance standards, but they do need a sign permit. So that is included. And then number sixteen is related to the existing signage for the church, the freestanding sign and cross, so that there is an easement provided for them to be able to continue to maintain and access that facility. Exterior light fixtures will need to be downcast and shielded. The light plan did show that they would meet the ordinance in terms of the illumination levels, but they did not yet have the specifications for the specific lighting. So that would be something that would be looked at at the time of building permit. And then from there on, we get into the requirements that are associated with the public and private improvements for the site and then also funding and the grant timelines associated with that. So these are part of the city engineering comments that were provided to you. And they relate to the deed grant, forest mains and payment of those and specific dates on which the development contract and other items need to be included. The development fees for this project would be their park dedication fee primarily. And that would be, need to be paid and that's in the amount of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Low impact lit agreement is a standard requirement, so they'll need to provide that. And that's just so that they are showing that they're going to continue maintaining their underground stormwater facilities. And the developer is required to enter into development contract with the city with the cost share items identified. An access easement needs to be provided. Actually, number thirty-three, I think. Yep, thirty-three is another duplicate of item number two, so thirty-three. Conditions number seven and thirty-three can be deleted. And the last two relate to specific items related to the fire marshal for spacing the fire hydrants and sizing of the main water lines to the site. With that, that's the majority of the application. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held back in November, on November twentieth. It was attended by about fifteen people. I'd say in general, folks were more accepting of this plan than earlier plans. And they thought it was an improvement. There was still concern raised by folks about stormwater management and how that would be treated and also how the building would appear from the lake, screening of that building through the park. In addition to that, the city did receive comments from the Department of Natural Resources. And I'm going to go back to this plan. Their initial comments that they provided to us were related to a couple of things. Number one, initially, and these plans have been revised since, but initially the top of the bluff was shown in a different location. And the reason for that was because this area is highly wooded and it's hard to see just topography information when you have a heavily wooded site. So after the comment from the DNR about the location of that, the applicant did go back out and actually survey these lines. So we have the accurate survey information. And so the highlighted, the green line is the top of bluff. In addition to that, DNR was not supportive of any encroachment into the thirty-foot setback. From a staff standpoint, we believe that what's proposed is reasonable. They modified their plan significantly. An initial plan showed having parking actually in the city park over to the east. That has been totally removed. Now all of the improvements are totally within their sight. In addition to that, a previous plan did show part of the apartment building actually encroaching not only into this bluff impact zone, but a little bit into the bluff itself. So they have modified that and moved the building and modified the design of the building. So there still is some encroachment, but it's not in the bluff impact zone. And there are actually just these four areas that encroach ten feet into that thirty-foot setback. So with that, city staff is recommending approval of those. The Minnesota Department of Transportation also commented. And their primary concerns were related to noise. And the condition for meeting the MPCA noise standards addresses that. And they're also very happy to see and early on recommended the trail connections be provided. So the project will address those two items. With that, the only other thing I'd like to call your attention to is that we did receive specific comments from Michael Young. And he requested those be provided to planning commission and they were incorporated into the report. With that, I can stand for questions.
Great. Thank you, Deb. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Commissioner Awad?
Thanks for an excellent presentation. There's a lot of, a lot of pieces to that, so I appreciate that. My question is about the bluff setback. As I understand it, there's that, there's a twenty-foot setback from the top of the bluff that's defined by that yellow area. And that's considered sacred. There's no, you can't do anything in there and then...
It's the bluff impact zone, yes.
Bluff impact zone. And then there's a thirty, the thirty-foot setback is just an additional ten feet.
Yes.
And so it's, that ten foot is, I mean, as you've kind of described, can be in play by, by variances.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Commissioner Anderson?
I was kind of curious about the noise mitigation. Is it like a sound barrier that's going to be put up on thirty-five? I mean, what is that going to be looking like?
Exactly what Mendot says they will not do. So that's why they have provisions usually for meeting sound mitigation. It's in how the building's constructed. And it's usually a number of different things can be additional wall depth, if you will, additional insulation that's provided so that you get that attenuation, sound attenuation. Also a different classification of windows that, where they have less sound or noise, it's able to permeate through that. So those are the standard things. And then there's a decibel level that they need to show that they would be within or below.
So it's the construction of the building itself? So it's the construction of the building itself that's going to mitigate the sounds?
Any other questions, commissioners? Yes.
I'll ask another question. It's about the, there's a grant for the sewer infrastructure improvements and there's, there appears to be a timeline that needs to be met, which is coming up.
Yes, it's very aggressive.
Yeah, okay. And is that, I mean, is it realistic to get through everything in that timeline, do you think? Or what happens if that timeline isn't met?
Our engineering, city engineer has been working with the applicant for many months now and then also our former economic development coordinator. It's a grant program through deed and with that, there are certain parameters and dates that need to be met for that. So what we have established is these are kind of the drop dead dates, kind of per the state program. If they do not meet these dates, then what would happen is the city would drop this project in terms of application for a grant and we would propose a different project. And the applicant is aware of that, so they're aware that these deadlines do need to be met. I don't know if Ms. Dean, if you have anything to add to that?
I think Deb explained that very well. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I know in the beginning of your presentation, you had mentioned that it was changed to make, the site was changed to mixed use in the comp plan. When was that? Did you say?
That was done, I believe, last, it was last fall. I don't know the specific date. But then what for the commissioners, what we had done is we initially submitted the comprehensive plan, including the land use plan, to the Metropolitan Council and they have a 60-day review period. And then we knew that this and several other sites, including the Healy Ramy property, you know, that there was interest in developing for those. So we also submitted separately for those particular sites to be considered for the land use change and it all came about at the end of the year, I believe.
Yeah, I believe it was the end of 2018, like November timeframe.
And then can you just, can you describe the mixed use definition for us, please?
Certainly. Yes, for mixed use in each of the zoning districts and in the comprehensive plan, there are general descriptions for all of the different land uses and then also zonings. And the idea of a mixed use district is to allow for flexibility, basically getting away from the standard, like single family segregated from commercial, segregated from industrial. The mixed land use is intended to allow for multiple types of uses to occur in one area, be it commercial, say on a first floor with residential above. The heart of the city, for example, is a mixed use type development. We call it heart of the city, but that's generally what that refers to. It's allowing for a mix of different land uses that can be developed in a compatible manner.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions?
Did I hit this right?
Go ahead.
So Deb, something about the height change, that's not included in any of the things we're talking about here?
Yes, I'm sorry if I did not call that out. The Shoreland District has a 35-foot height standard.
Right.
Maximum. And in the mixed zoning district, there is no standard and we have, the proposal is 60 feet and that is a deviation that is identified, excuse me, not a deviation, but a specific variance that's being requested is to allow that higher taller building. It should be...
I guess I'm looking at what you just read off, one through 35, three, a couple, yeah, one through 35 with a couple of ones that were being removed.
We did include in the Shoreland variance to allow the apartment building height to exceed 35 feet, 60 feet is proposed.
I'm looking something differently.
In the recommendation? I think he's talking about in the recommendation.
The recommendations that you read off. So that's different than what, okay.
The recommendations, I mean, we did not include all of the specific different variances and things, only the ones that had a need for a condition or deviation. And in this case, if this weren't in the Shoreland District and the mixed district had that 30-foot or 35-foot height, you would have seen a PUD deviation for that.
That's what I was wondering.
But yeah, this is Shoreland and they do not recognize PUDs, so we have to go with the variance.
Any other questions? Then I will continue the public hearing at 7:21. So if there's anybody from the audience who wishes to speak about this topic, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record and please sign in if you haven't done so already.
My name is Patrick Starber, Civil Site Group, 4931 West 35th Street, St. Louis Park, Minnesota. I represent the applicant and thank you for having an opportunity to hear our public hearing this evening. Deb has done a phenomenal job and the entire staff has been fantastic in giving us opportunities and challenges in order to have this site meet a very challenging site, existing conditions. But she's been very helpful and the entire staff has been great to be able to give us an opportunity to engineer a site to respond to the conditions that we have here. The site challenges are that there's a bluff steep slope situation that really challenges and pushes the site, pushes, wants to push the building as far north as possible, yet there's a parking lot where we want to try to economize and utilize existing pavement areas that wants to push that as far south as possible. So we've worked and evolved the building to follow that line rather closely and Deb has outlined the benefits that we've done that come in the form of PUD benefits to the site. One of the items that I wanted to drill down on specifically is the stormwater opportunity. Currently, that existing parking lot all drains to the south and across an extended green area and then extended down into the, what would eventually encounter, that runoff eventually encounters, steep slopes. So in those steep slopes, there's been significant erosion that's happened and been caused by the increased runoff because of the paved surface. And so because of this project, we're proposing to capture that stormwater runoff and capture it and treat it in infiltration basins. So those underground infiltration basins are basically underground pipe that allow for the opportunity that, for that water to be captured. Burnsville has a unique situation in treating both the water quality and the water volume required to meet the site. We far exceed the requirements that are listed specifically as far as the volume control, the overall that is required to infiltrate. What our particular site is infiltrating is it captures and holds the 1.75-inch rainfall. So in simple terms, 90% of the rainfall events that we have over the course of a year are under that 1.75 rainfall event. So those current rainfall events hit the pavement, roll offsite and then roll down and eventually into Crystal Lake. Those rainfall events now will be captured, infiltrated and won't run offsite. So that will be something that doesn't drain off onto the existing area or off into the existing park area. That was really one of the additional, you know, the detailed pieces that I wanted to respond to, that this site opportunities, the benefit to furthering, improve the quality of the rain, of the stormwater and the water quality of Crystal Lake that we believe is a great asset for this area and we think as an asset for our overall site as well. And I'll stand for questions if you have any additional ones.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Robert.
Yeah, initially when this was proposed, this whole idea, and this is just my own curiosity, the property was going to be based on, it was like a retirement property for people over 55 and above?
Yes.
Is that still the goal for that or is it an open apartment complex?
No, it is active living. It is, it is for 55-plus. That is, that is what it's targeted for.
Okay. Targeted, but is there, you're going to have a bylaw that says if you're under 55, you can't live there? See what I'm getting at?
We are targeting 55-plus and depending on lease up, I mean, you can change that as it goes, but our bylaws will mandate out of the get-go, 55 and older.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Would you like me to repeat that through the microphone?
Nope, that's, it was something I needed to know just based on the fact of the area and stuff and the type of housing that it was gonna, who was going to be living there? You know, there's a whole different concept of who's going to be living there based on, we've got areas in Burnsville where, you know, it's a little sketchy and then we've got places that are awesome. There's a lot of 55-plus places going up and that's a big draw nowadays and I know that it's something that's needed. So I was hoping that's what you were going to go after, you know, because right now senior housing is at a minimum and we need even more of it. So a decent place like this that I think is pretty nice looking and it looks like you're ready to do upright is something that's needed and whether it's supposed to be in this area or not, that's determined later on maybe, but for right now, the, what I'm looking for is that type of answer, to be more of a senior type housing.
Great.
Any other questions, commissioners? Commissioner Awad.
Can you put up the list of the recommendations, recommendation and conditions? Sorry. There were a few of them that applied to the applicant directly. Yeah, there we go, the first one. So four, number four, which is the crosswalk material, the number five, fencing or safety barrier on outdoor patio and six maximum slopes to not exceed 3.1. Are you aware of those conditions?
Yes, and we're in agreement with those. Those are fine.
That's all I wanted to know for you. I understood what that meant.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, great, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mike Hughes. I live at 1309 Crystal Lake Road East. I have three questions. Early in your presentation, Ms. Gueros, you mentioned that the city engineers declined to give an easement for drainage. So my question is, does that have an impact on the proposed waste, I'm sorry, stormwater treatment system?
No, it does not. The, back to that, sorry. On the plat, the subdivision ordinance just has general standards, you know, regardless of where you are, that front yards will have a 10-foot drainage and utility easement and side yards will have a 5-foot drainage and utility easement. And there's no way to change that except through a specific variance to the subdivision ordinance. What the city engineer is saying is rather than having an encroachment agreement for those retaining walls to be within the drainage and utility easement, that drainage is already provided within this public right-of-way adjacent to the property. So that will provide for the improvements. They're just saying that they don't need this in addition. They would rather not have those easements planted in the first place than have an encroachment agreement to have those retaining walls in an easement.
Okay.
That helps.
Another question about the stormwater treatment system that the gentleman before me mentioned. It sounds like it's designed for 1.75-inch rainfall event, but the Twin Cities has already had several rainfall events that exceed that. So what will happen to that stormwater management system or structure if a rain event exceeds 1.75 inches?
Letter, city engineer addressing it.
For clarification, what Patrick was saying was...
The 1.75-inch rainfall event will be fully captured and held within that stormwater management system. So the water will still go into that system and depending on the event, it will infiltrate and then pass through the three various chambers and ultimately outlet through the discharge pipe and then enter, yep, as Deb is showing, and enter into, what is not shown here, there's sort of flared end section. One of the engineering recommendations was to do a energy dissipation manifold on that outlet to help disperse that flow even more and then it will be discharged into the riprap there and then overland flow.
But if the rainfall event exceeds the maximum capacity, it's planned for, will it overflow?
No, no, it is planned for a larger capacity, but the way these are designed, it will hold given volume and then continue to flow through. So it will be still held within those underground chambers and work their way through.
Okay.
The chamber.
Okay. Another question is about the height. You asked a minute ago about that. Crystal Lake is a FAA certified seaplane port and this structure is on the flight path. Are there any requirements along the lines of avoiding conflict between the height of this building and air traffic?
We did not receive any feedback that that would be an issue.
No. Okay.
Existing tree cover is about 60 feet.
Yeah, I asked that question at the neighborhood meeting and that was the answer. Okay. Another question is about the transportation aspect. This is very close to the freeway and I found a U.S. Department of Transportation guideline, not a regulation, but a guideline, that residential structures shouldn't be closer than 450 feet to a major freeway. And it says a major freeway is defined as one that has 125,000 vehicles per day. That part of the freeway, I found in a report from the Minnesota Department of Transportation, has 109,000 vehicles per day, so it doesn't meet that requirement, but future growth might bring it close to that. So my question is, is this structure or any part of it closer than 450 feet to the freeway?
I believe that it is. However, MINDOT specifically gave us the guidance that all they are looking for is the noise requirements to be met and that's consistent with other previous applications that we've had for like the Healy Ramy properties and also the ones, the new project that's going up on Grand Avenue.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thanks for your attention.
Hi, my name is Mike Young. I live at 361 Maple Island Road in Burnsville and I want to address the issue certainly of the mixed use. This proposed property does not belong in the middle of an open space park. If mixed use was intended for areas next to an open space park, the 2040 comprehensive plan would have identified them. And yet of the 121 instances of the word mixed used in the 2040 comprehensive plan, I couldn't find any such areas identified. There are two categories identified in the 2040 comprehensive plan for which people can reside and they are classified as residential land use categories, of which there are three, low density, medium density and high density. That's for residential areas. And for business land use categories, there's a subcategory called mixed use. The mixed use designation is intended for businesses related, business-related areas and areas of high transportation. The land that the church and Crystal Lake West Park occupy are not for business use nor are they in a high transportation corridor. Areas in the 2040 comprehensive plan that are designated for mixed use are areas such as heart of the city, Burnsville crosstown between Niclet Avenue and 35W, Fairview ridges, a number of areas along Highway 13 and County Road 42, satellite and neighborhood retail centers and certainly the Burnsville center. Those are areas where the Northland Real Estate proposed four-story, 100-unit apartment complex should be located. It does not belong in the middle of an open space park. The reason that mixed use has to be used for this project, according to the developer, is that they could not make it work financially with a lesser designation. In other words, low density, medium density or high density. So in order for the developer... So in order for the developer to have a profitable project, the city is rezoning the church's land, which is right in the middle of an open space park, and that's not right. The church wouldn't have to do this, except obviously they're probably having some sort of financial issues. The acreage that the church wishes to sell could be brought into the park system. Three Rivers Park System has acquired residential property that butted up to Murphy Hanahan Park, including the removal of homes. And they just, and then they would take the homes out and then restore the land to native species. In this case, there are no structures that would need to be removed, and about the only thing that might occur would be to plant some native grasses and possibly some plants. Funding for this could occur from the following sources. City of Burnsville, Dakota County, the state of Minnesota, charitable organizations and trusts, as well as crowdfunding, which is quite popular today. If the above sale did not bring in sufficient funds for the church's finances, here are some other ideas of how the church could take care of their financial situation. According to Wikipedia, the United Methodist Church has twelve point seven million members worldwide, of which six point eight million members in the United States. If just ten percent of those members gave two dollars, that would come to one million three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That would certainly probably help their situation. The church could establish a crowdfunding campaign to bring in additional money. Lots of people do that. Now I want to talk finally about Crystal Lake West Park. The land that makes up Crystal Lake West Park and Grace Methodist Church was at one time owned by Grace Whittier. In nineteen sixty-one, she did it, she deeded the land to the United Methodist Church, which now bears her name. Around that same time, she met Dick and Harriet Dury, longtime neighbors of ours on Maple Island. They met on a boat ride in Lake Superior. They built a friendship, one that lasted until Grace's death many years later. Prior to building on Maple Island in nineteen, in the nineteen sixties, Dick and Harriet approached Grace about buying, buying a parcel of land so that they could build a house. Grace's reply was that she did not want the land to be broken up, as she wanted it to remain whole. As time went on, Dick encouraged Grace to have this land become an open space park. That would certainly align with the desire to keeping this land whole and not be broken up. If Grace had, excuse me, after Grace died, she had deeded the land to St. Olaf College. Dick worked with St. Olaf and the city of Burnsville to bring this land into the park system. Had Grace not deeded the original acres, the acreage to the United Mess Church, there is no doubt that all of the current land, including the land that was deeded to the church, would be part of the Crystal Lake West Park system. None of it would have been set aside for future residential or business development. In Crystal Lake West Park, there is a nice little beach on the lake. Locals know it as Cherry Hill Beach. There is a sign that was put up after the park was, uh, came into existence, and the sign reads as follows. "This is a really neat place. Please leave it nicer than you found it." These words are not meant just for the people who are actively using the park. They are also meant for those who are in the position of stewardship of the park, and that includes members of the planning commission and the city council. And in closing, much time and effort went into the twenty forty comprehensive plan. This proposed development of a four-story, one-hundred-unit apartment complex does not belong in the middle of an open space park. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Good evening, my name is Kurt Ennis, but I live at eight fifty Blue Will Bay Road and, on Crystal Lake. I have two questions for Deb. One is, uh, the connection of the trail system, can you explain that to me, please? Because I've walked that trail several times, and it connects pretty good, but I'm confused.
What, um, in terms of the connection is right now, the trail to the south, um, ends at this location. So the connection that would be made through this project would be to connect this section of trail all the way up to Maple Island Road to the trail that's, um, along Crystal Lake Road West.
And what happens to the trail in front of the apartments there along the lake? Because that trail walks pretty good there.
There are no additional changes, um, just, the only thing would be the public trail along Maple Island Road.
Okay. Second question has to do with the density. You and I spoke about the density of this, uh, project several months ago. And you indicated that the, uh, project's density far exceeds the lot size that it presently exists on, but because of the PUD, we could use both properties to get the density. Am I understanding correctly that the likelihood of building a second property here is very unlikely because we have already basically used up the six acres density?
The, for the density. Go to, the, um, density, um, with a planned unit development, we calculated over the entire property. So when that is considered, the entire property is six point one acres. In the mixed district, you can have fifteen to twenty-one point seven-eight units per acre. Um, their density overall would be sixteen point three one, so they're within that standard. If we look at just the individual lots, a deviation would be requested to allow this density to be. Let's see here, if I have that. Uh, just with lot two alone, it would be thirty-four point four-eight units per acre. But again, because the PUD is allowed to be expanded over the entire site. Um, in terms of if this site could ever have additional density, they would need to come in and make application for another PUD, uh, and another deviation. With a planned unit development, part of what the city looks at are the deviations and also the public benefits. Um, and PUD density is specifically allowed in the ordinance to be increased um, when you provide certain things like have been proposed here with them having the additional green space or underground parking than the ordinance requires of those types of things. Uh, but it is possible that in the future, uh, someone can always make an application, um.
Because certainly one of my concerns is Grace Luthern abandons that site. And along we come again, and we gotta stand here again and go through this whole process again. And I'll be a lot less excited about that one than I am about this one. I'm not very excited about this one. Because it does exceed a lot of the concerns that we have as residents on Crystal Lake, including the setbacks and so forth. And I understand this project's gone a long ways down the road, and it's not likely we stopped at this point. But I don't like a second one there, and that's what I'm afraid is gonna happen. You know, that church is likely to be abandoned in my estimation, not in other people's estimation, but in mine. And I believe that's gonna be sold right to this same developer, and we're gonna be back here again with a second building. And I'm not very excited about putting two of them in that park. One is way exceeding my limitations.
I, anybody can make an application at any point in time. Um, I don't know what the future brings. I know what's been, um, part of the application. Um, and at this point, the church wants to retain that, uh, piece. But, um, yes, someone could make an application in the future to, uh, to build another building or a different type of building or a different use.
And how close are we to the limitations? I mean, how many more units do you think they could put on there? I'll put you on the spot.
Well, they're at about, uh, in the mixed district, overall it allows fifteen to twenty-one, almost twenty-two units per acre, and they're at a little over sixteen, so.
So they're pushing the limit already.
Um, Chair, um, if I just may add, um, Deb's correct. Um, at any time, anybody can make application for anything for the site, and we, we just can't predict the future of what, of what might come before us.
You know, we as residents on Crystal Lake have a tough time putting an addition on our house. You know, without encroaching on the lake or doing something to the lake, and runoff is considered and all that. So we're setting some precedent here that's a little dangerous. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak about this topic? Okay, then I will close the public hearing at seven forty-five. Commissioners, comments, questions? Commissioner Anderson.
Um, I would just like to say thank you to everybody who, uh, came forward to speak to us tonight. Um, it's, it's good to hear both sides of, of the argument, I'm glad that that, that happened. So it gives a whole new perspective to everything that's going on here, so thank you very much.
Commissioners, anything else?
It'll be all personal, that's all.
Is there a motion? What are you guys thinking?
Want me personally?
Anybody.
Oh, I, I think the plans and everything look awesome. I think that the, the building's gonna be beautiful and the whole bit, but I actually voted against this the first time it went through. And I was the only guy that did. But, um, I've got different reasons why the park is more sacred to me than a building right now. And I'm, I'm up here as a non-paid volunteer, looking as myself as a Burnsville resident. And I'm just putting out my feelings like that, I guess. So for me, I'm, I'm not interested in putting out a motion right now. I'm not saying against it, but I'm not the one that's gonna do it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, I like the project. I think it's a great idea. Um. I think Burnsville is in need of more senior housing like this. Um, I don't know what the future may hold, like we were all talking about before. We can't all shake our magic eight ball and see what comes up. Um, so I think what is proposed to us right now, I think it's a great idea.
Since we're sharing our feelings, I'll, uh, I'll say, I, I'm, I'm supportive of the project. I think it's, uh, nicely done. I think it's a challenging site. I think too that if, uh, for example, if the church were to go away and this entire site became available for, you know, it's private property. If the city, you know, it's, it's kind of outside of our determination whether the city was, should buy it and turn it into a park, that's, that's kind of decisions, I guess, for other people. But as a piece of private property, if someone was gonna develop the entire site, I think we'd be seeing a lot bigger building that would be oriented north-south with a lot more apartments that are, that have lake views. I think, I think this is gonna have relatively minimal impact from the lake. So I, I don't feel comfortable proposing the, you know, the, the recommendation, but I, I do generally support, support the idea of the project.
My turn. Uh, I mean, I, I, I do feel like the developers are trying to, um, take all the considerations in, in when they're, in their planning, and trying to make it as best as possible. Um, the fact, like you were just talking about, you know, it'd be more likely to be in north-south with the full plot, better, you know, view of the lake, and here, the idea looks to me at least that they're trying to make as minimal of an impact as possible from people who might live on the lake as far as looking at that direction. Do you see the side of the building? Not a very long north-south building there. Um, I, I, I like a lot of the, the ideas behind it, but I, I, I don't know, the, the idea, like you're talking about, it's a, it's a park space. It's an open space, and those are going away faster and faster in, in suburban cities. And I'm not a big fan of the idea of, uh, removing any at this time. So, I don't know, it's, it's a good, it's a good development, it's good for, uh, tax base and all that kind of stuff, but, uh, I, I, I would not want to, uh, introduce the motion for it as well.
So let me ask you guys who talked about the park space a question then. This is on private property, it's not on the park space, so I guess I don't understand the hesitation.
As it butts up to the park, and as it impacts in a certain way, I guess I look at it that way. I mean, the plan and everything, everything looks fine. If this wasn't near Crystal Lake Park, it'd take two seconds, you know? I mean, staff put a lot of hours into this, and there's a lot going on here. I don't know the parameters of what happens from a planning commission to a city, because from what we do, it's gonna go to city council, right?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah.
And, um, one thing to note is that the church was there before the park.
Right.
Many, many, many years, decades before the park. The city council directed that they move ahead and change the land use to mixed use. They did not look at, nor was there any suggestion of buying additional land. In fact, if you look at the comprehensive plan, the city already has too much land, and they have looked at ways, how are there ways that we could maybe reduce that? Um, it's more than what they can take care of. The Parks and National Resource Committee, you know, would be involved in that. Um, there's a whole lot of funding that would need to go into that, and you would need to get the approval from the owner to do that. And they don't want to turn it into park or sell it to park. Uh, so those are just parameters to consider as, as a planning commission. Um, I'd love to live next to a big park too. Um, I'd love for all of the lake to be parked, but it's not, it's developed with single-family homes. So the considerations we have before us are what the actual application is, what the owner of the property is requesting to do, and the direction that you've received, uh, from the city council uh, during these past several years.
To add on to what Deb said, um, th, this project, project brings one hundred new tenants, um, into the area that can enjoy the park, that can enjoy these great resources that we have, that can connect to the trails that are already in place and that are proposed by the developer. Um, so, I mean, it's a balance. And I think the, um, applicant, by preserving as much green space as they are, and by providing to their future residents, um, this great space next to the park, I think that's something to add to your consideration as well.
What's the protocol for this going to city council, whether we're on board or not? What I mean?
The planning commission, uh, you're a recommendation body, so you would make the recommendation to city council.
Yep.
Um, this item will be a discussion item on the city council's agenda because of all of the infrastructure parts and the, um, and the grant. So it's, uh, something that, you know, it's within your purview. However, you do need to make your decisions referencing and based on what the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan and the subdivision ordinance provide for.
So we're not always voting on a personal type estimate, there's other things involved.
Based off the zoning and the land use.
So we're kind of on the hook a little bit. Yeah, I know. Okay, that being said, and Steve's not here, Steve retired. He would have ten more minutes to talk, I'm sure. Um, yeah, then I'd like to propose a motion. I know this is where this is going anyway. We're gonna definitely need these. Do I need to push a button? We're good to go. Oh, thank you, Deb. Um, the planning commission recommends. The planning commission recommends to the city council approval of the rezonative R1, one-family residential to mixed PUD, mixed-use plan unit development, preliminary and final plot of a two-lot commercial subdivision concept and development stage PUD, variances and conditional use permit at 15309 Maple Island Road, subject to the following 30...
Thirty-three.
Thirty, how many?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three conditions, as we're taking out number seven and number thirty-three. I believe that's what I wrote down, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. And city council will hear this January 21st?
Yes, the meeting starts at 5:30 in this same room.
Okay, the fourth item on the agenda, thank you. The fourth item on the agenda is to have a discussion about the transit-oriented development zoning ordinance presented by Aaron Puduch of WSB.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. I'm happy to be here tonight to present a complete draft of the Transit Oriented District. Just for discussion purposes tonight, this is not the official public hearing, and we're not requesting any action from you tonight. Those sheets that are being passed around were because the letter-size version of the packet cut off some of the portions of the map, so there's a full-size version for you. I'm gonna just walk you through the basics of the content and focus particularly on things that have been updated since your November 13th workshop. We've workshopped this a couple of times, so I know that you're familiar with the basics. But the way the draft ordinance is structured right now is that we have a purpose and intent section, an administration section, which is new from the HOC district. That section does include opportunities for administrative review, which I'll go over in a moment. We have a few definitions that are specific to this district that we've included. The next section, which is much of the meat of the district, is the regulating plan. That includes the map that you got tonight, as well as building types, lot requirements, placement, and uses. So those are the main categories that are regulated in the district. Then the last section is the general standards, which are standards that apply throughout the district, no matter what street type you're on. Those are listed there, many of which were also in the HOC district, so I'll walk through those with you. In the administrative review section, as we discussed in November, a lot of the applications within this district, at least it's intended that they would be able to be reviewed administratively, and so that means without planning commission or city council approval. There are a few exceptions to that. A proposal would have to meet all of the regulations in the ordinance, including the ones listed there on the screen. If any variations were requested, like for density, for parking, if there were conditional uses that were proposed, expansions of non-conformities, those would all come before the planning commission and then ultimately the city council. We've also included language whereby if an applicant wanted to, or anyone wanted to appeal an administrative review, that could come before the planning commission as well. And then you have a diagram, and we're going to translate this into a user-friendly document that will go with the ordinance, but it's basically a how-to-use the transit-oriented ordinance. And so you start with the regulating plan, which is the map, to figure out what street your project would be on. Then you take a look at the lot requirements, which are the same throughout the district. Then, based on what type of street you're on, you'll take a look at the building types and placement to see where you can put the type of building that you're looking for. Then we have uses. Those are written into use groups, as we discussed in October and November, to be a little bit more general, a little bit more flexible about the types of uses. There are accessory, conditional, and a few prohibited uses in the district. And then you would get into those general standards, which include parking, landscaping, handling of trash, and building design and materials. So that's kind of the flow of information in the ordinance. So going with that flow and starting with the regulating plan, this has been updated slightly since the last time you saw it. We've changed the future streets, those dashed streets on the screen, to correspond with what's laid out in the comprehensive plan. So, not necessarily saying that streets have to be located in exactly those locations, but those were... That was the layout that was envisioned in the comprehensive plan, and so that's why they have been modified in that way. They're laid out types A through C, and we have setbacks and build-two lines associated with each of those street types. The ordinance defines primary street frontage and secondary street frontage, so if you're on a site that has more than one street on a boundary, the city planner can work with the applicant to determine which way the buildings would be facing, to help determine which would be the primary street frontage. Then, moving on from that, taking a look at the lot requirements. We've graphically illustrated the minimum area, the minimum width, and the minimum depth of any lot in the district, and those are all the same requirements as in the current HOC district. Next, again, by street type, what types of buildings are allowed on each of those streets? And each of those building types, mixed-use, multifamily, townhome, and commercial office, those are the building types that are described right now in the HOC district. Notice that we've allowed most, all of them everywhere, except for a couple of exceptions. Street type C, which are the wider, higher-volume streets. We would prefer not to see townhomes on those types of streets. And then the strictly commercial office-type buildings on the flipside, A-type streets. We'd like to see more of a mix of use on those types of streets. Then we've illustrated all of the building types, so basically recreating some of the illustrations that were in the HOC district. Our intention is to, once the ordinance is adopted, to create reference sheets that will have each of the building types and then all of the information that an applicant would need to know for that particular building type on one sheet. So that would be separate from the flow of the ordinance, but just so that they would be easy reference. And so, again, each of these building types is the same as what's in the HOC. On the left, that's the completely commercial or office building type. On the right is the mixed-use building type. On the left here is a multifamily residential building. And then on the right is the townhouse building type. So, there's associated text with each of those in the ordinance. And then we have the placement requirements. So where can the building go on the site? And in the previous draft of the ordinance that we presented back in November, we had one graphic that illustrated all of these. We've separated them into three separate illustrations because it was a lot of information on one graphic. So here, we're showing the build-two line, so the red line here is the build-two line. That's where we want the buildings to be closer to the street. And for each street type, there's a different build-two line. There's also a maximum setback for each street type, and that's the purple line. So essentially, if you look at the build-two line and the maximum setback, you have essentially a zone where the buildings can go, and there's a certain percentage of the building, the building frontage that needs to be located within that zone. We've also got parking, or I'm sorry, accessory structure setbacks. I'll point out one change that we've made here from the HOC district, and that is for accessory structures. That's this table down here. We've prohibited accessory structures in a front yard. In the current ordinance, there is a setback, but for good urban design, we'd prefer not to see accessory structures in the front yard. And I don't think that would be likely to occur, anyway. And then finally, the frontage requirements. So as I was saying, there's a percentage of the building that's required to be in that build-two zone. It's 65%. That's your current HOC requirement. There's also a maximum amount of parking frontage that can be located along the building frontage, and that's 65 feet. So that just means that you can't have your entire parking lot facing the street. Then, looking at use groups, these are much the same as when we went over them in November. We're using more general terms like shopping, dining, services, employment, residential, institution, lodging, recreation, and open space. And those are all defined in the ordinance, so the city planner or zoning administrator has some guidance about which use group a particular project would fit into. I'll say a little bit about the employment use group. That one, we, based on some feedback that we got from you, that we got from our focus groups, that there might be some additional uses other than just your traditional office or commercial building that we want to accommodate in this district. And so, the text that you see in the ordinance is based largely on TOD employment districts that we found. Eden Prairie had a good example. Brooklyn Park has another good example, where there's some allowance for some limited manufacturing, some maker spaces, some breweries, and even some incidental packaging and processing. So, it gives a little bit of flexibility as to what types of uses could go in the district. You can see the list of permitted uses, so those are the use groups that are permitted anywhere in the district, and that's most of them. There are a couple that we would recommend be conditional, employment being one of them, because we have such a wide range of uses here that some of those, depending on the site, would probably benefit from another layer of review. We also have text in the ordinance that says that the employment uses would... We would like to see them further from the actual transit stop. Those areas near the transit stop should be more active uses and not the offices and that sort of thing. So, that's something that the planning commission would want to consider. And the other conditional uses are similar. We took those from your existing HOC district, so drive-throughs and a few others. We did change places of assembly. That's a new thing. In your current ordinance, it says religious institutions. So to be a little bit more general and legal, we've recommended a change to places of assembly. And then, finally, the general standards. And again, these are standards that apply throughout the entire district. We've established a minimum density of 20 units per acre and a maximum of 80 units per acre for a project that includes residential units. That is reflective of the density in your comprehensive plan. We've also recommended a minimum floor area ratio for non-residential projects. And again, that's with the idea of increasing the activity level in this area to support transit and to take advantage of the transit that's there. We have developed a separate section for parking, which does not currently exist in your HOC district. And that's, again, we're recommending a reduction in your parking requirements by 25% in this district based on the fact that there's going to be transit and therefore less demand for parking. We did a lot of research on what's the appropriate way to handle parking in a transit-oriented district. And this type of reduction was pretty typical of more suburban stations, bus rapid transit and not light rail transit. And so we tried to be as conservative as possible with reducing the parking requirement. We also recommended a couple of specific changes. We talked to some of our developers in our focus groups about multifamily parking. Right now, your ordinance requires parking based on the number of bedrooms and the type of unit mix in a multifamily. We're recommending a straight one-and-a-half spaces per unit. We also recommended a reduction in the guest parking, and that's in there too. Right now, you require half a space per unit for guest parking, which is pretty substantial. And so we recommended a reduction in that. And finally, for shopping uses in particular, we would recommend three spaces per thousand square feet. Again, that was on the more conservative side of best practices that we saw for suburban areas that have a transit orientation. Right now, your standard is higher than that and requires more parking. And then we also added a section on bicycle parking, both long-term and short-term, so we got pretty specific about bicycle spaces. Short-term bike parking, meaning your standard bike racks, which are pretty easy. And then requiring some long-term bike parking too, meaning that it's enclosed, it protects the bikes, and there's a few ways that that can be provided to that's in the ordinance. Pedestrian-oriented design is something new that we've added to this one. Just a few requirements that new developments include walkways that connect to public sidewalks, that there be crosswalks, much like you were evaluating tonight with your PUD proposal, and street furniture be required along a public walkway. We've reduced slightly the amount of landscaping required based on the fact that you have granted some deviations for that, and some of these sites are a little bit tight. We're still testing that to see if the landscaping requirements work, so I'll bring you more information on that at the public hearing. And then the rest of those, signage, trash, lighting, and building materials are the same as in the HOC district. With one exception, the signage requirements are different for HOC 1 and HOC 2. So in the Transit Oriented District, we included an allowance for monument signs. So when we're talking about freestanding signs, that was up for a little debate, and so we had the conversation with staff and decided that monument signs were appropriate, but not the tall, the pylon signs or the pole signs. So, that's what the Transit Oriented District allows. During, between November and now, we did an online survey to get folks' impressions of the direction that we were going and to get some feedback. So in addition to those focus groups, we got some general feedback. We had 61 complete surveys filled out, and there were some other partial ones. But a lot of good comments that we got from there. Generally, there was support for the direction that we're going, and people really loved the public spaces and events in the heart of the city in general. There were some concerns that were expressed. General themes were that parking is a challenge. You probably know this already, but parking is a challenge in the area, particularly for events and on weekends. So not every day, not every night, but events and weekends were the time that folks really had an issue. And having more signage about where public parking was located was something that folks brought up. They thought that more shops and restaurants were needed, and there were a lot of comments about pedestrian safety across 13. And I know that was something that came up at our two work sessions. So not just 13, but there were a few other intersections that were brought up, so. So where are we going now, tonight? This is, again, just for your discussions, your discussion. I'd be happy to answer questions and take feedback. We'll make some revisions based on what you tell us. And we're looking at a public hearing. I have on here for February PC, but I know that you were actually looking at perhaps your meeting in two weeks for a public hearing. So depending on how the discussion goes. And then that would go to city council following your recommendation. So I would be happy to hear your questions, comments, reactions.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts.
This is pretty cool. Yeah, I mean, from a layman's term point of view, it really shows you, I mean...
Someone said zoning was cool.
I have to say, compared, I mean, the materials we had to read before we got here was pretty extensive. But looking at the way this is and how you just explained it, that, I mean, I could explain this to other people as well. This is a great way to understand what we're dealing with, because we have a lot going on in the future coming up.
Hopefully.
So, I didn't even know there was indoor bicycle parking available. But, no, very good job. This is, you know, this is... It was overwhelming at first, but this is a lot easier.
Understood. If I may add, we're doing a lot of this already in our current Heart of the City zoning district. What we're doing is making some changes to things like parking, adding the bike parking, taking a relook at that long list of uses that we spell out and generalizing things and, and coming up with new uses that weren't envisioned, you know, 15, 20 years ago, and adding those to the mix. And, and again, we've had an opportunity to test the ordinance over time through projects that were, you know, in the mid-2000s to even, you know, as soon as last year, looking at things like, you know, do the setbacks work? Does the landscaping work? How are our developers reacting? So I think we have a lot of good, fresh information for this area. I think it, I've worked with the Heart of the City zoning ordinance. I think having the graphics in place in the zoning district will be helpful for our user. It's sometimes hard to go from the design framework manual to another sheet of information, to the zoning code, and flipping back and forth. So having something all in one spot, I think, will be helpful to the user. So just look forward to hearing your comments. Thank you. Commissioner, what?
Yes, great presentation, great graphics, and I was really pleased to see the pedestrian-oriented design. I think one of the comments from the survey is more restaurants and, you know, I think the challenge there really is to get, get people, you know, people live there, to get the people that live there, and to get people to come there and get them to get out on the street and to, because whenever I've been through there, it's usually been pretty quiet. And so I don't know that that's a zoning issue, but more just a, just a general comment. But overall, very nice. Thank you.
Anybody else? I agree with everything everybody said so far. And we'll have opportunity to, our attorneys had one look at the ordinance. We'll run it by them again, as well as city staff as well, for any additional comments and feedback. And a touch point, if we can squeeze that in with our stakeholders as well, or our focus groups, just kind of that one last check-in with everybody before it comes before you for public hearing.
Great. And I would say, one of the other intents when we were constructing this framework was that hopefully, at some point in the future, you may decide to use transit-oriented zoning in other parts of the city. And if that were the case, the idea is that you would just do a new regulating plan, so a new map like this for the other location, classify the streets there as appropriate, and then you'd be able to use the same language. So hopefully, in the future, that's how you would be able to use it.
Great.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, what's next? Okay. So the last item is updates. Staff, any updates?
I just have, I guess, one inquiry for the Planning Commission. One thing that we didn't note during your work plan discussion that we have in the past is, is there, or are there any additional items for the all-day work session for our city council to discuss? Typically, they discuss larger policy-type issues. I don't know if there's anything brewing that you've thought of that you would like for them to consider for further discussion. And then also, we have our ends and outcomes statements. Those are located within our comprehensive plan, as well as on our city website. And as it relates to Planning Commission, typically, you see a statement that talks about development redevelopment and our goals towards that and, and some specific areas like Heart of the City, further development within our Minnesota River quadrant, and some other initiatives. So again, if there's anything that you would like to see at the all-day work session or in relationship to the ends and outcomes, any additions or changes, I'd be more than happy to carry those forward.
When is their work session?
Good question. January, I have it here in my stack of papers. January 31st at 9:00 a.m. it begins at the Nicollet Inn. So if there's anything that you think of between now and then, you can certainly forward to me as well.
Great. Thanks, Richie. Any other updates?
I don't have any other updates.
Deb? I thought our new employee?
Sure. So some of you may have heard Skip Nienhaus, our economic development coordinator, retired a week ago Friday. And our new economic development coordinator started on Monday of last week. Her name's Jamie Schiffer. She is the chair, I'm sorry, not the chair. She's our staff liaison to the Economic Development Commission. She's also the point person for any grants as they relate to economic development. She'll be working on TIF, tax increment financing projects, as they come along. And she has over seven years of experience working not only with the city of St. James, but the city of Rush City. And we're just excited to have her. So she'll be working a lot on the, our different economic development strategic plan initiatives, kind of those top five items, as well as items with our marketing plan initiatives. So you'll see, I'm sure you'll see much of her around.
Good. Exciting.
And then the last thing, let's just, the draft agenda for your next meeting? Should not be as lengthy as tonight's meeting, as Sam.
Commissioners, do you have any updates?
Nope.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.